... outdoors because we really can hear you in the lobby. First thing on our agenda this evening is a public hearing. We have an application for a new malt spirituous and vinous liquor license for Walker's Restaurant, 1075 Commercial LLC. Kenneth De Pasquale, De Pasquale? Okay. And Joseph Cloutier.
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 At 1075 Commercial Street, Rockport, Maine. The way we normally conduct a public hearing is, I've already read the announcement of what it's going to be. I will ask if anyone wishes to speak in favor of this. If anyone wishes to speak in opposition, or if anyone wishes to speak neither for nor against, in that sequence. Then we will close the public hearing and move on to the new business, which is our next item after this, on the agenda this evening. So, with that, I'm opening the public hearing, as I had just announced. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this application for a new malt spirituous and vinous liquor license for Walker's Restaurant? Hearing none. Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to this application? And hearing none. Does anyone wish to speak neither for nor against this application? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing and we will move to new business, where we will take our vote on grant, whether or not to grant the new
The old Denny's.
License.
Yes, it's the old Denny's.
I was just trying to figure out which one it was. Figured it out.
Okay, good. Well, we'll consider the license for Walker's Restaurant. And they, to start this process, I would entertain a motion, so that we can go into discussion.
Ah, I'll find the motion here. I move to grant a new malt spirituous and vinous liquor license for Walker's Restaurant, 1075 Commercial LLC, Kenneth De Pasquale and Joseph Cloutier, at 1075 Commercial Street, Rockport, Maine.
Second.
Moved and seconded. We are now open for discussion. We now know that, we know where the restaurant is, or will be.
Know where it is. It's a beautiful blue.
Yeah, the shrink, the plastic is gone.
Yes. Recognize him. If we have any questions of the manager, we have received the applica, the, all of the application documents. One thing that I did not see in there was a statement from the chief of police. Normally, we have one.
I talked to him and asked him, and he said he does not have any problem with it.
I think typically also, we get that on a renewal, not necessarily a new.
Well, that's, that is true. Sometimes he does provide.
I can get, I can get him to submit a memo for the file.
Oh, that'd be fine, for the file. To effectively state what Linda just told us.
And these premises, I believe, had a, did they have a liquor license before, when they were doing businesses at Denny's?
I don't, they did at Denny's?
Yes.
They had beer. I knew they had at least beer.
Oh, okay. And I, I know at least one of the iterations before that had a full liquor license.
Yes, one was a sports bar.
Yeah, the sports bar.
Yeah.
So, do we have any further discussion? Do we have any?
When's it open?
May fifteenth.
May fifteenth, day after my birthday.
If we have any more questions of him, we're going to need to ask him to come up to the podium, so the folks at home can hear.
I have one question, and that's on the application, and I don't know whether this gentleman will be able to answer it or not, but on the application, names Mr. Cloutier, Mr. De Pasquale, and it looks like Ms.
Eleanor Stone.
Stone, as the manager.
She's the restaurant manager.
But then, on the, on the signature section, for the corporate offices, there's somebody named William Purse, I think.
Purse. He was, he signed for, he's Mr. Cloutier's, sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
He is Joe Cloutier's partner, so he signed for Joe Cloutier as part of the corporation.
Okay, I just wondered why he wasn't listed as one of the...
Joe, Joe Cloutier is a managing partner in his corporation. Ken De Pasquale is a managing partner in his corporation. They merge together. They have other people under them, but they're the managing partners. Joe Cloutier was in Florida at the time, so Bill Purse signed for him.
Okay, so he is a corporate officer?
Yes.
Okay. It just, I was, that was the only place I saw his name, was in the signature, and he wasn't listed as one of the, the corporate officers on the other parts of the documents. That was my only question, really.
Maybe I do have one question. So what's your all's wow factor?
Rockport. Walker's Restaurant is actually named after the Walker family from Rockport, which he was a, he was a first electman for 26 years in Rockport.
Walker Park.
Yeah, Walker Park. Clara Lane, his daughter, was the, was the town clerk for, I don't know how many years.
That's awesome.
And so the restaurant is just full of local black and white pictures from the 1900s on. They're my great-grandparents. I'm the executive chef of the restaurant.
Great. Do they do decent renovations on the inside, or was it mostly exterior?
Um, we tore a lot of walls out. We changed a lot, took all the carpeting out. It's a, it's a polished stained concrete floor now. Added a lot of seating that wasn't there before. We didn't tear any walls down inside, but we did do, it doesn't, if you didn't know it was at Denny's, you'd never know it was at Denny's.
Hmm, that's good. We don't need to add that into the record, do we? A little sidebar up here. Jeff, did you have any?
Innocent until proven guilty.
All right. Are we good here? Then I'll call for the vote, all in favor of granting this request for license. Congratulations. Wish you well.
Looking forward to trying it out.
For coming down and trying it out. The next item, we have an announcement. Briefly, I'm going to announce that the, there will be a solar celebration, Thursday, May 4th, 4:00 to 6:00 PM, at the Rockport Town Office. Actually, I stopped by there this morning, and I noticed that they had a film crew there, and the town manager and a couple of other people were being interviewed, I think.
To publicize it, and also to get the word out on our solar panels that were put up.
How'd you do? Did you do okay?
I don't know. You have to look at the edited version, see how much, most of it ends up on the cutting room floor.
Yeah. Was that with VSTV?
VSTV.
All right. So, come on over, 4:00 to 6:00 PM. I'm assuming that we will have little snacks and non-alcoholic refreshments. Non-adult beverages.
That'll be an opportunity for people, I assume that the revision folks will be there.
Yes, absolutely.
So it'll be an opportunity for people to ask questions about that, if they want to consider it for their businesses, or their homes, or something like that. So a nice opportunity to see what it does, how it works, and how it could work for you, and how it's going to work for the town, too.
Are we going to have any sort of graphics that help explain, like blown-up pictures of this, the info that we got?
They're actually going to have a laptop that will give you real-time stuff, which the, the plan is, there'll be a monitor on the wall, where people will be able to see what it's producing, be able to track. It'll, it'll have a bunch of different graphs on there, so you'd be able to track what the, the panels are producing, and how effective they are.
Okay.
Good. All right. Moving on, then. We will now move to our stated objectives for the meeting tonight, and that is a continuation of our library discussion. We would entertain, at this point, public comment on the items that are before us this evening. And when I say that, it's, you know, in general, it's continuation of our library discussion. This evening, we are going to try to concentrate on both the survey and the possibility of mediation. But if there are other comments on the library, we would entertain them at this time, this evening. And, does anyone wish to make public comment this evening? Oh, I guess not. No one? Then we will move on, move to our discussion. At our last meeting, we did decide that we did want to move forward with a survey. I believe that we do have some money that we have found in the budget that is left over, from previous library architectural discussions.
Yes, we have that, and there's some money in my side of the budget that has to do with professional services, so there is, there is money to get started on this.
Megan also indicated that there was still some money left in the building architectural study under the library. She gave me a number, E601-7401. That there's maybe as much as $10,000 left in that.
Right.
So there is money, if we want to move forward and start now on this. I think what we really need to discuss is, what do we want out of a survey? We, we've talked about this in the past, but we are looking to bring in a professional to guide us in the proper wording of questions, so that we get the answers that we need to hear. Not what we want to hear, but what we need to hear. And it, you know, I'm, I'm sure that I'm going to act sort of as a devil's advocate at several points tonight, but, you know, I'm, I'm just going to ask the question right out. Yo, do we really need to know why people voted no, or yes? Or do we need to know what the majority of people are looking for in a library in Rockport? And, and, you know, I'm just, I'm just saying that to get this discussion started. And Jeff looks like he's got, he's moving his mouth.
Yeah, it's, I'm, I'm warming it up.
Yeah.
Although I was just in a burning field of hay, so you'd think it'd be plenty warm enough. Anyway, so, we don't need to necessarily, and again, almost every single thing we talk about tonight is probably best reiterated to, to the professional, and I'm wondering about the, the structure here. I mean, I could take notes, Linda can take notes, and we can use the combined thing to present what we want to know. Do we need to actually reference the past votes? That doesn't matter, so long as we get all of the information we need. And the information we need is, how do you feel right this minute? In, in that sense, that's the only sense in that we don't need to know the, the previous votes. It's, it's, the earnest effort is for us to ask as many people as possible, as many voters in, in the town as possible, where are you now on this, 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 and that? So, do we need to reference previous votes? Not necessarily. Do we need to take the temperature many different ways of the people right now? Absolutely.
When I first suggested the survey, which was back in November, at that time, I stressed the fact that I really did want to know why people voted the way they did, and that was all I wanted to know, at that point. And I, I still think it would be instructive to ask some questions of people, you know, did you vote in the previous election, and why did you vote? I think that that's, I think we now need more than just why did you vote the way you did, and I think that asking people why they voted the way they did is a good lead-in to what Jeff is talking about, which is, you know, we need to somewhat take the temperature of where people are. I think we also want to find out how hardened people are in their positions. In other words, let's just take for an example, there are going to be some voters out there who wanted the library to be at the RES site, and so we want to find out, you know, how, how important is that to them? Are they willing to compromise on that view, providing that other facets of the, of the situation are resolved to their satisfaction? So I think we have to find out what's most important to people. Is the site the overarching problem with people? I don't know. I mean, we've, we've, as a board, we've made a decision to go with the One Lime Rock site. I guess by conducting a survey, we open that up again. I don't know. And people are going to scream at me for saying that, because we, we've made that decision. But, on the other hand, and then, and then ask the questions, too. Is it, was it money, or was it size? What was it? But I think we need to do more than just ask, what do you want in a library? We want to, we need to ask, given the view, that other people in town have a view different than yours, Mr. Citizen, whoever's taking the survey, how do you feel about that? What, how can you move towards somebody else's position? How can you, and what are you not willing to move on? But I think that, and that's the thing that's hard for us to do. I mean, I put together a question with a whole bunch of laundry list of reasons why people voted, but I don't, I have no idea how to find out, you know, how firmly entrenched people are, and where can we get movement, and where can we find, truly find compromise? I mean, Brendan was fond of saying, you can't compromise on site, because you can't put it halfway in between. You've got to pick A or B. But there are some compromises on size, and on program space, and on some other exterior appearance, into whatever. So I think we really need to find out what people are, you know, how, how broad is their acceptance of various facets of a new library?
So, I definitely think that, at least referencing the previous vote, kind of what Ken's talking about, that gives us a good bit of information about what we had most recently proposed, so I'm not opposed to having some questions on there about the previous vote. But I do think that the majority of the questions need to be, you know, paint us a good picture of where the town would like to go. And I'm not opposed to some probing questions about entrenchment. I guess I just, I maybe view that more in the mediation process, so I had initially separated that in my mind. But I think that if, if worded properly, we could get a good baseline of information for the facilitator or the mediator, to at least have some sort of data points going into it. Hey, we, we conducted a survey. Only two or three of the questions were about entrenchment, or your ability to flex outside your comfort zone, and, and reach towards a compromise. So that'll be good. So I'm kind of now seeing as broken into three separate-ish sections, just, just in my head, for conceptual purposes. And one thing that I wanted to throw out there, because, you know, we tend to do this a lot, if we're talking about revisiting the, the RES site, maybe just throwing it out there for discussion purposes, we did have an offer from a citizen, who's a professional at putting together surveys, Emily Lusher, and at that time, it did not make sense, there were some comments about impartiality and things like that. You know, just throwing it out there, as far as it would save, if we're talking about putting up to, if not over $10,000, just maybe a couple of minutes of our discussion time, to maybe reassess utilizing Emily? With the potential of saving some decent money?
Something that I learned very early in my professional career, working at a bank, was that in some, in a lot of instances, if you want acceptance, you need to look for the consultant that is from more than 50 miles away. Now, I was living in Chicago at the time, and the person selected 50, because that was the outer limit of the near-in suburbs. So you had to be out of Chicago for them, for people to believe what the finding was of an independent consultant.
Fortunately, part of it.
Probably going to tell you exactly what your people had already told you, but, you know, you still needed to have somebody from far away, who could, could have that, the appearance of objectivity, of unbiased, you know, impartiality.
Yeah, I think, given that, that, I mean, I have no problem with the idea that Emily's a seasoned professional, and probably could do a good job, but having, that she has expressed a preference previously on the issue. And I think that she indicated that she would not want to get involved with it either, for that reason, and, and we did hear from a lot of people that, that said at the get-go, if, if it was done by somebody who was involved with it, that, that right away would not lead to acceptance by the public of, of the product. And I think we have to have acceptance by the public of the product, and it's no, no aspersions on Emily at all, but I think she's a little too close to the situation.
Cool. Yep. Rick, I'm going to sort of drift this your way right now. You, we charged you a week or two ago to start an investigation of who might be possible, and, and I'm asking you this, because I want to direct the next bit of our conversation toward how we want to select whoever it is to do this. This is a professional. We don't need to go through the normal RFQ processes, if we were, you know, bidding out to repave a street, or rebuild the high sidewalk, or something like that. But we need to have confidence that whatever our choice is, is going to be acceptable. So, you know, what have you, have you found anything out that would lead us in a direction here?
Yes, I contacted the recommenda, the, one name came up on, from the recommendations of both Emily and, Emily Lusher and John Beeman, and so I contacted that recommendation last week, and got the ballpark number of what that would cost. You know, as, as you said, you, you could simply go with just, you know, select somebody, or you could do a, a request for proposals. We could send that out, and send that to a bunch of firms, and, you know, get a bunch of responses back. The, the challenge would be, is with the RFP, would be, and I, and I think that's a place that both Emily and John could add some, give us some assistance on, is developing the RFP, if you decided to go that direction. An RFP for an analytics place, that would do the analysis of what happened, to try and, and I like your point about how are people finding, feeling today? You know, I think that's important for us to know, is, you know, how people are feeling today, after, you know, the vote's already taken. So, you know, if you decided to go that direction, I think we have a couple of people here in town that can help us, or help me develop the RFQ, and get that out fairly quickly. But there's going to be a turnaround time of several weeks, probably up to a month, to, to do that. And when I talked to Bruce, I mean, he, he had several comments that he made, and one of them is about, you know, about the questions, and really, he...
I'm sorry, Bruce is?
Is the consultant from the...
He's the gentleman that they both, okay.
Right. Is the, the questions, really what he, he would need to spend some time with you, and to develop, what is the information you're hoping to get out of this at the end? And then he would develop the questions, based on, you know, giving, you know, getting the information that will allow you to move forward. And if the goal is to get enough voters to be able to support it, he would develop a questionnaire, that would, he'd be able to get to say, okay, if you, if, the, the hope is, that if he's done his analytics right, that if you do this, 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 and this, you'll get enough votes to get to 60% of the voters that will support it. One of the things he talked about was the fact that, while we all like the face-to-face stuff, that a combination of a mail-in survey and a online survey is the most effective. The cheapest way is the online. The online is, is the cheapest, not only because it involves mailing, the mailing is a pretty much set cost, but it's having to do the analytics after the fact, and they have to sit down and hand-enter in all of those responses. And if, if we have, how many registered voters in town? 2,300, is it? 20?
We have 2,600.
2,600? And, you know, say we were lucky, and got 50% of them to respond, 1,300 voters to respond, and out of that, 75% of them were mailed in, that means somebody has to sit down and type all that information into the, in, and that takes time. Whereas if it's done online, it automatically puts it into the right categories and separates it out. So there's some flexibility there in which way we go. But he, he recommended a, a multi-pronged approach, to allow for a mailed-in survey, a reminder mail thing, saying, you know, a postcard to send people out, to remind them, did you fill out your survey, and, and also promote that online response thing. They can, they can, there are steps that they can take to help to mitigate the fact that maybe people would be voting, not voting, I used the wrong word, I used the bad word.
Responding.
Responding, multiple times, that there's a factor that they, they, they can figure that in, and they, they have some means to, to limit that. But it is not like voting, that there's a winner and a loser. It gives you data that you, you're going to have to make some decisions at the end about where you want to go.
What about those that are not voters, or people who do not live in Rockport?
Being able to get on, yeah. I, I don't know. You'd have to, we'd have to talk to him directly about it.
I think that the professionals can handle all that stuff for us. We don't need to sit here and debate that, I don't think.
He had given any indication on that?
I mean, I, I guess my gut reaction is that putting together an RFP would be a helpful exercise for us, as far as, you know, fleshing out what we want, and, and making sure that we ask clearly what we want. And I think having multiple responses to that RFP, or RFQ, whichever we do, would also be helpful for us, because we'd be able to compare and contrast what various different firms might do for us. I understand that that obviously is going to add some time to the situation, and I, I have no idea how many firms there are who might respond.
Yeah, I would guess we'd get, I, I think you'd get several. You know, you'd get several.
And just because, I mean, the firm that you've talked with may be a perfectly good firm, may end up being the firm we choose, but sometimes through that process, you learn things. You learn how a different firm might do a little differently, you get a different approach that might be better for us, or, or not, I don't know. But I do worry a little bit about not doing that, and just choosing one firm that we shortchange ourselves somewhat.
So, I'm, I don't discount the, the value of an RFP, and I, I don't mind doing it. I would like to do it in a sped-up manner, if at all possible, because I think that our hi, and I understand that it's more costly to do data entry manually, but both from a, from a secure basis, that we know that people aren't voting twice. I, I'm a little disappointed to hear that he's talking about analytics to either throw out or mitigate potential twice-and-thrice entries. Any possible, I, it's my, it's my opinion that there is a sizable group in the town that if they, if their understanding is that there is any chance of somebody doubling or tripling their vote, that they would create, wreak havoc by saying, oh, the whole thing's way off. And I think that that is a particular, that is probably as important as, as what we ask in it. So I think that we need to either come up with some kind of, of, and it would be labor-intensive, but some kind of thing, either you walk away from voting with a, a survey that has a random, you know, that has a, a random-generated number on it, like a serial number, so you can enter that in a, in a computer response, and therefore you can claw back that time. Or you call in and say, I didn't vote, I know I have two more weeks, can you give me a randomly-generated number that's in our database, that we know is a good number, but, and then somebody just checks it off on the voting.
Let's, let's be clear, we're not talking about a vote.
No, no, I, I know that, I know that, but, but it seems to me that the most, somebody can challenge us, but the most legitimate pool of people that we need to ask are the registered voters. And so we use that as the, as the universe, and then we say, we say, this person called in and got a number, that will, nobody else has that number, we don't even know what that number is, so it's still a, it's still a, you know, your name's not attached to it. But you can't do it twice. You can't send in, or you can't log on without one of these QXRP numbers. Oops, you just made that up, we know you made it up, because it's not in our universe. And I, I'm in the weeds in terms of how to design it, but I think that's, it's an important thing to assure...
That's something that an RFQ may be able to address.
Yeah, I agree, that's important. I think that's what we do with the RFQ, we just say that we have very high concern about duplicate responses, and we need to know what your firm, or you are going to do to mitigate that problem.
What approaches would you take to, to, to eliminate that?
Excellent, yeah. But, but having said that, the June election's coming quick, quickly, that's...
You're saying all the things that I wanted to say, so I'm not, I'll let you keep going on your tear.
So that mine mailed worked?
Yeah, it worked out. I mean, I perked up a little bit when they said, using algorithms to weed out multiplicity, just, I couldn't make that make sense in my head, so I see if someone clever could do that.
As I say, I think we just have to make that clear in the RFP, that this is very important to us. There may be some other, you know, organizations they work with, that they're not so concerned about that. I mean, I don't think, you know, just to use the trash survey as a, as an example, I don't think there are too many people saying, oh, man, I'm going to vote twice on that one, to hopefully I can get this response in.
Get single serve.
It's not an issue for that, for that in particular, but it could, it could be an issue, so we...
Here we have the issue of integrity of the response.
Right, exactly. And I totally agree. And, and I think we need to rely on the professionals to help tell us how to do that, and, you know, random number generating might be part of it. I'm a little concerned that keying it on the June election, I, I don't know how big the turnout is going to be for that election.
Well, that, that's your start, that's the start of it.
I, I understand, but...
Well, if we're going to mail it out, does it have to be keyed on the June election?
Well, we don't know whether we're going to mail it out or not. I mean, I think that's part of the RFP, too. How do we get in touch with everybody? What's the best way to do that?
I think it has to be, you'd have to be, do some sort of mailing, in order to...
In order to make sure you get everybody, you'd have to do some sort of mailing.
And that brings up the question, are, you know, are only eligible, are only registered voters eligible to take the survey? That's a question we have to answer. For example, what about a, what about a family who has four kids and all the kids are not of voting age? Are those kids get the vote or are they to respond? They're, no, they're not of voting age.
No, but, but the survey says how, what's your family, what, what does your family comprise of? How often do you use the library, that sort of thing? So, that, that can be, that's fact to write in. I mean, that's, those are important questions to ask.
Just because I think it'd be an interesting exercise for us to do what we do, which is talk around, you know, and then maybe, maybe we'll try to make some sort of decision on the thing we just talked about. So, we're talking about, do we want to have an RFP process go out to multiple potential vendors or a single potential vendor? And the only other thing that I would add to that conversation is the timeline, it's gonna be tight for June if that's what we choose to, but we would, we have to kinda make a decision tonight to get the RFP process out. Up to a month gives us, what, two weeks before special, yeah, for the town meeting.
Our next scheduled meeting is May eighth, a regular select board meeting. You know, if we wanted to hold or, or discuss and verify or validate an RFP, that would probably be the logical time to do it. Unless we would try to pull another one in, in before.
My recommendation would be that, that you allow me to do the RFP.
Yeah, we, we don't need a meeting for an RFP.
You, you allow me to do the RFP, you tell me if this, like that, that issue about making sure that the RFP deals with multiple responses, how, how, um, the firm would deal with that. If there's anything else you wanna, make sure you get in the RFP. And I'll work with John and Emily on developing an RFP and get that out as soon as possible. Because technically, we, we, we need to advertise it. But I would go through and I would make sure that the RFP went to a bunch of firms that we know potentially have, have the potential. That's, we just send an email with the RFP to them. We've done that with, we did that with the library architects. We, we just went out and sent it to a bunch of architects who had done any work in, on libraries in Maine.
I mean, I, I would think that the RFP process takes it off the table for the June election, quite honestly. Because if it takes a month to get the responses to that and choose somebody, then we're only a couple of weeks out from the election at that point. It's gonna take us some time, they're gonna have to develop the survey, and we're gonna have to have some back and forth on that.
We've gotta get it printed and in place.
Things like that, so. I think we could use the election, and, and again, in the RFP, maybe we use the election as a way to, to let people know, hey, it's coming, and here's how to obtain it. I don't know, but it seems to me that-
Yeah, you'd be cutting it tight.
I think it would be. And, and one thing we wanna do with this is we wanna do it right. I don't wanna rush it. I don't wanna rush it and cut corners and then find ourselves back in a situation where, you know, we have to do it all over again.
Oh, those are all true facts.
You, you drawn back, and I was wondering if you-
No, no, I just, I did it to see over, over your shoulders and-
Okay. Yeah, so, we're willing, we, we wanna direct Rick to construct an RFP and get it mailed out as expeditiously as possible. Do we want to at least review it individually before it goes out? Have him send it to us and, you know, do we have any comments? Send it back directly to him, no other person involved. You know, 'cause, you know, right now, we haven't really said what kinda, you know, what do we want to, you know, get out of this? And do, do we wanna have that in the RFP? That we're looking to solve this problem or answer this question or prepare for this, you know, future movement?
Well, I mean, Rick can write a preamble to set up the RFP, you know, in the last several years Rockport has done, has gone through this process. Sure, it makes sense for us to be able to individually react to what they've done. We can, uh, if you want, we can go on and talk about what we wanna learn from it. And then at the end of this meeting, revisit the RFP thing and say, jump or, or any sense to do something different.
What you wanna, the details of what you wanna learn, I don't think need to be defined in the RFP. You know, the actual, we wanna learn this fact, this fact, this fact. But in general terms, you wanna gain information will allow you to go forward with a successful vote. And, you know, firms, they'll come back with a, you know, with how they would approach that problem. The exact information, the exact questions, or the exact pieces of information you want, you'd work out with the, with the finalist.
I think, you know, as far as the preamble goes, one of the things that we probably ought to state, and I hope we believe, is that we believe the majority of the residents of Rockport would like and have a new library, period. What we don't know is, you know, how big, what is it gonna look like? You know, what's, what are the services gonna be, things like that. I mean, if we don't believe that the majority of people in Rockport want a new library, then we're barking up the wrong tree.
It'll make a job way easier.
Yeah, because I think, I, I do believe that. I think that everybody, no matter what their opinions are on the various facets of what we've talked about over the last couple of years, I do think that there is a majority of people in Rockport that would like a new library, a bigger library. How much bigger is a question? And, and then there are a lot of other questions, obviously, that we need to know. So, I think we have to state that at the outset. But what we really wanna know is, you know, we've, how do we go about doing that? What's, what's the best path for us? And, and I would submit that the goal is not necessarily to have a positive vote, but the goal is to, to determine what the people of Rockport want in a new library. If we determine that, then the positive vote will follow. You know, 'cause you, you can, you can design anything that might get a positive vote. It might not be great for Rockport or whatever, but I think we really wanna determine what we, what the town wants.
Owen?
So, just off the top of my head, for general, about what we would be asking them for questions, I wrote that this would be given to the, the survey folks. We'll be asking questions about three main areas related to building a new library. Those would be around the previous vote and why you voted that way, what you're looking for, Jeff's, where are you at today? And, for lack of better terminology, are you entrenched right now or are you open to compromise on various things?
I, I think those would be good, so long as we coach them in that this is our current thinking.
And this was just the general? And then after we select the firm, we can go and expand and work on those three areas.
Any firm is gonna go back and look at meeting minutes and live streams and newspaper articles and all that stuff to learn as much as they can about our situation. So, at least I would hope they would, and they may be able to then tell us.
I don't know if appalling scientists would necessarily do that. They would, they would ask us questions, and they wanna get the job over with, so they're not gonna. It's not like they're designing some big, complex system.
Let, let's take it, at this point, as a given, that we're gonna direct Rick to put together the RFP with, you know, assistance. And we will take at least a brief look at it, but not to come back at our meeting to take a vote on it. What is our next step then, when we get the answers in? How do we want to deal with that? You know, when we get the responses, you know, here's my proposal. We get, we get, say, six or seven firms respond, how do we want to-
Different question, I thought you were asking.
Yeah, how do we want to process that?
And I think we're gonna have to individually review them and then come up with some kind of ranking system like we do with a lot of other things that we do. And say, well, my ranking is that Firm A is my number one, and Firm C is my number two, and Firm D is my number, whatever, and have a, have a workshop discussion.
Or do we wanna ask somebody to-
No.
Weed out the ones that are obviously unqualified?
No.
No, that's us.
That's our job.
That's our job, we, we-
I'm just, you know, as I said at the beginning, I'm probably gonna ask a lot of, you know, double advocate questions here, but, you know, okay.
Another, just quick thought, do, and I don't know enough about the RFQ/RFP process. Do we inform the person that we're, that we may set a not-to-exceed-dollar limit on what this whole thing will cost us?
Good point, yep. That's a good one.
And we came up with those rough numbers in abstract.
Right.
Yeah.
But that's what we put in-
Based on Rick's conversations with a couple of people in the industry.
So, remind me, remind me that that was, that part of it, we, we did ten, ten, and five, and one of the tens was a survey.
I think so, yeah.
But that was also, the variable here is if we're sending it out by mail, it could be a lot of, you know, 'cause that could, that would push it to a higher level as opposed to, well, if you're only gonna do it online, it's gonna, gonna cost you this and-
Right, no, but they, Rick, Rick could say the whole project cost, including all expenses, is ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
And some may come back and say, you can't do this for that money.
Right.
And some may come back and say, I can do it for less money. And then it's up to us to weed through that and make a determination.
Yeah, it depends on the firm. I mean, if, if you're looking at a firm that is, that does business all over the country and there's, you know, is a huge firm with hundreds of people working there, you know, their overhead is gonna be pretty significant as opposed to a smaller firm that does more local, locally-based stuff. The price may be much more reasonable.
Or vice versa.
Yeah.
You know, it, it could be they have, they have data entry people in, in foreign countries that, you know,
Yep, it could be too.
Twenty cents a hour. Oh, my God, we're, we're-
Okay, we're not outsourced, we're not, we're not discussing outsourcing.
And just because I feel it's necessary, I'm just gonna super quick note that the folks that are at home watching this, that don't wanna still build a library because we're gonna spend, raise their taxes, are probably gnashing their teeth at the fact that we're talking about spending money to do a survey about how we can best get a vote to pass to spend more of their money.
But this is their opportunity to have their voice heard. They, it's as, as important for them to get a hold of the survey, however we get it to them.
I brought it up just so I could-
No, no, you're absolutely right.
Just so I could hear that from you.
You're absolutely right. And it's, it's very important to us to hear them because we don't know if that's ten percent or forty-one percent or what it is.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and by the way, the great thing about the surveys, nobody else knows those for real either. It's all in our, each of our, our heads, what, you know, whether we think, well, obviously, everybody thinks like me. Obviously, nobody thinks like me, but, um, so, to that end, particularly if we're not gonna try and rush things and get to the June vote, I would have this board consider that when, when we hire somebody for the survey and sit down and talk with them, that we have also, at that point, hired someone, or at least preliminarily hired, you know, have somebody who will be doing the mediation because the mediator may have a, uh, questions and/or a spin of how to present something that might be important for us to take into consideration.
You're, you're stepping ahead a little bit.
I am, I am.
I know we wanna come back and discuss this. I've got another question I wanna ask. Once we determine who the surveyor is, how do we wanna proceed at that point? Do we want to individually sit down with that individual, with that person or, or firm? Or do we wanna sit down as a group like we are tonight and-
We have to sit down televised as a group.
Public, public meeting.
Yeah, otherwise, otherwise it, it will feel like, oh, you know, that Parker guy has, has put in some questions, you know, stayed in a way that's-
Again, you know, eventually it'll have to come back where we approve in, as a body, you know, what those questions are. But do we wanna have an initial go-around individually or?
I, I, I think we learn and we present all as a body, under the glare of the TV lights.
And one of the things that we would request is that they give us some ground rules ahead of time as to, you know, this is what we're gonna be asking you or be, start to think about this or this area or, you know, general things.
I think they're probably run up against people as-
And some, some of that'll come back in responses to the RFP too, as to how they're gonna do it, I'm sure.
Okay. All right, so, Rick, you know where we are here?
Yep, I do.
Do you want us to take a vote on anything?
I don't need you to.
Oh, oh, oh.
Oh, 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 here we go.
How much money did you have in your budget squirreled away?
Prior to the new fiscal year.
Right now, Megan has, has told us that we've got about ten thousand left in this E six oh one dash seventy-four oh one Building Architectural Survey, which is under the library docket. That's what's left, or, you know, up to, we can take up to that amount out of there, and she feels comfortable.
Are we then replacing that in the next fiscal year with the ten that we tagged for the survey?
It's gonna depend on where we find we're going to be.
And that's going under the library budget, I think.
Yes, it's going in generally in the library budget.
Yeah, we put ten thousand in, so we'd be using ten thousand, so we'd be using the money now.
We're using it early.
We're using it early.
Yeah, yeah, so we're, we're, we're not gonna leave that depleted.
Right.
Okay.
No, I, I wouldn't wanna do that.
I would either.
No.
Ben, you keeping us on, on street narrow here?
There was money, that money left in-
Ben's even taking his glasses off, so.
That money left in the architecture line was, was gonna be counted toward what we thought we would need for architectural services in the next fiscal year, and so-
But we're not gonna use, lose it, we're just using it early.
Right, we're just using it. It's all being approved as library money, yeah.
Can, can, can I maybe? Because sometimes, you know, a bunch of dudes are sitting in a, in a kayak and they're like, hey, let's go, keep going down this river. And then someone else is up on a cliff going, hey, there's a waterfall. Stop paddling.
So, do you have, like, a question or?
How do you, how do you feel after the conversation we just had?
I mean, it's interesting. No, I mean, it, it is, it's interesting. I think once you start talking with the people doing the statistical analysis, a lot of your questions will get answered. I mean, personally, with my experience doing statistics, if you want the most valid answers, you're gonna do a random sample survey, and you're not gonna try to canvass the whole town. But again, that's something that the statistical people can talk to you about. That's their job, so that's just where I'm at on that. But, I mean, the money thing, that's fine, that's all your choice. I mean, I brought up, it, the budget is way up in the library line because of things that got added in there. That's just one concern that I have, but that's, I think it'll be fine. I mean, there's nothing that can be done about it, it's important stuff. Is that good for everybody?
I was just making sure we weren't paddling towards a waterfall in your mind.
My, my hope is that as we get towards the end of the year, that we'll be able to, to make sure that we, we find the money. It's, it's always possible that we can find the money in other lines in my budget to cover this and leave that, that money in the, for the architectural stuff in, in the library budget and make it, allow it to stay there. We'll do our best to make sure that, that we spend money out of my budget first before we can tap into that.
It's a salary line?
Yeah.
Tap into that one, right?
Professional services. So, are we good at this point, and we move on now to the discussion on mediation?
Well, with the knowledge, with the knowledge that we really haven't fleshed out any of the things that we wanna learn. I mean, we have, we have three broad categories offered by Owen, and we got a couple of little questions. But we will, I presume, then flesh that out significantly, all, all the way with, with a successful candidate.
But build, building on that, you, you would want us to have some more refined questions pre-meeting with the vendor. It's not like we wanna generate everything.
Oh, yeah, I would, I would have everybody, including myself, I had a page of it, and it's located somewhere on my desk, of, of, you know, potential questions and/or this is what I'd like to find out. And, you know, I, well, how I do it is I, I would personally, myself, put, offer a question saying parenthetically, this is designed to, if it's not obvious, this is designed to tell us that. So, we should all be, be taking notes and, and writing it down between now and when we, when we talk to the successful respondent. Mostly, I said that 'cause I didn't want anybody to think, you know, did they already get through that thing on the agenda that says, talk about all the questions? No, we didn't.
Well, Jeff, Jeff, you make a, a good point, though, is, is, as, as we get into the point of interviewing, if you're, if we're interviewing or talking about potential vendors for this, is, it would be a good idea to, to have a good sense of the information you're trying to get out of, you know, at the end of this, what information you'd like to have in hand so you could ask the vendor, how would you approach this problem? You know, how would you approach getting us the answers to, to this stuff? I, I would, you know- I, I would, you know, again, I mean, I totally understand where you're going is that you have to think of the question before you think of how you're gonna get the answer, the, you know, the answer you're looking for.
Well, we're not looking for answers, but we're looking for information.
Information, right.
To quantify information.
Right. Is to, to try not to, you know, be hung up on what questions we're gonna ask on the survey. It's what information are we hoping to get at the, at the end?
So in terms of the RFP, would you like us to spend more time right now on, on those things or?
No, I don't think so. I think we, you can, you know, if you're, I think your point is, if you're starting to think about that now, that would be very helpful.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So shall we discuss the mediation? And Jeff, you already raised an interesting point that when we get to developing the questions, we should already have the mediator involved?
I, I think so because, for one thing, the whole concept and the whole title mediator and the whole concept of mediation, normally it's reduced down to two parties of some sort. Here we have, what, town versus select board, dun, 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 you know, or town versus itself, or, you know, what is it? So the, it's gonna be an interesting challenge for a mediator and, and what I see is a, an opportunity for a skilled person to be in the middle with the various lions. I'll take some more heat this. You know, be in the middle of the coliseum and, and these, these groups of, of people are, are all around and that person say, okay, we have just gotten back a significant amount of information. We have reviewed all of what's been said publicly and, oh, by the way, you know, those people who feel this, you represent approximately this percentage. You, you're, and, and, well, that's not, not even that aside because that feels too much like winning. A mediator doesn't deal with winning, but it deals with, with having people come closer to a common goal. So the common goal is, what is your message? What are your concerns? How can we, how can we address those? So the mediator would, could certainly be in a position to say, some of your concerns have already been taken care of. Take a breath and accept that. The mediator could say to another group, some of your concerns, or the same group, some of your concerns doesn't look like they're gonna be taken care of. I mean, the concerns of the people that want to spend absolutely no money on a library, we're hoping, in a sense, we're hoping by our actions that their concerns aren't gonna be fully met because we think a new library is, is important. That's put in the negative. But we certainly, the mediator says to them, we are on your behalf going to try to get a library that has a tremendous value. So the amount of money that you are spending out of your taxes is gonna give you tremendous value. Does that make you feel better? You know, that's what the, that's what the mediator does. So I think it's important for us to, even before or at the beginning of us talking about what do we want to see out of mediation, is to really have a good feel for what the mediator will do. And, and it's not an enviable task. But I think that some of, you know, the, the things I mentioned are, are a part of what a mediator can do and I think that that's where we have to. We need to have a quick lesson, perhaps from a mediator, in terms of what it is we're looking for. Much the same way, we, we need to, you know, the polling scientists can take care of telling us what they do. That's pretty factual. Mediator, we need to learn more and, and be inspired and, and work with, you know, somebody to, to to know what it is we want, you know, or we could, based on my observations and the rest of our observations, continue along, which is, which is fine too, you know. Do we anticipate doing an RFP for mediation? And if so, should it go out at the same time?
It, it could. You, you could do the same thing.
Well, I, I mean, I, I guess to some extent I see some value in having the mediator involved earlier in the process, but on the other hand, if the survey is well designed and, and we get good responses, then the nature of our mediation is not known at this point.
Right.
And hopefully the survey is gonna tell us, well, you need mediation on this topic, or you need mediation on this topic, or maybe in a perfect world, the survey tells us everything we need to know and we don't have to go down the road. And it's probably not likely, but you never know.
Yeah, that was the, the point that both, both of the mediators that I spoke to. One, one was recommended by Paul Charbonneau, who has done work locally here. And the other one was, was recommended by Eric Denny from the Ad hoc Library Planning Committee. And both of them said this, basically, the, the, having the survey, the, the survey done ahead of time would be very helpful for them to know what the facts are on the ground. So what people are thinking and what people are feeling. And so that, that, that would be a big step in the right direction, getting that done ahead of time. And, and then, you know, there's two ways to go about the mediation is, you know, there were, both of them, each of them had a different approach. One was, you know, their experience had been working with a very limited set of circumstances. And the other was talking about, you know, having it be wide open and having to mediate a whole gamut of different choices and options. And, you know, obviously, the easier solution is to say, you, you have a limited scope of work. Here's, here's what the problem is. To narrow, help, help focus it down. Here's what the problem is. Here's the solution you're trying to mediate. As opposed to having an open-ended question, you know, that could, in, in our case, that could take years of work.
I mean, that's one of the reasons that I suggested in the survey that we want to find out, you know, where, where people's ability to move on certain issues is because I think that'll identify what the real sticking points are and then therefore where the mediator has to focus, I think.
So let me rephrase my earlier comment and, and say, it would behoove us at the meeting where workshop or meeting, however we, we make it, where we are discussing with the successfully bidder vendor to invite people like Mr. Charbonneau and others in the area as audience members, but who could then perhaps chime up and give us their expertise. So it, it doesn't have to be the mediator we choose, but just someone who is familiar in that world offering at no cost, you know, towns, towns members saying, consider this, consider that. That's, that's.
Makes sense.
That's the, the cheap and easy way out. And it's not, maybe not easy, but it's the, but it also brings in more, more members of the community as well.
And we do have local experts, so to speak, you know, as in, in Paul and in Eric, who do this kind of work and, and like with the survey work, you know, you've got people in town that are, that do that kind of work that can help us navigate the intricacies of the, the technical parts of it. You, you don't need to reinvent the wheel here. We have experts in town that can help us navigate that stuff.
Well, and that, that brings to mind, going back to the survey now, you know, one of the things we want to find out is where are the most strident divisions in town on this issue? Is it the cost? Is it the square footage or what is it? Because I think finding that out will then put us in a good, a good jumping off place for mediation. You know, what do we have to mediate?
And that, because I, I wrote some stuff down and then I thought I was kind of maybe jumping the gun because one, don't know how the mediator wants to operate and two, don't know what the sticking points would be, but at some point, we should probably go through an exercise of figuring out after we meet with whoever's gonna provide the service, what do you need as far as a range of things where you can negotiate? Square, you know, just like we're dealing with the architect. Do we, and we give the architect a range of square footage and a range of cost? Are there things to which we could give the mediator a range of, you know, here's where you can work on, on a little bit of horse trading or trying to get to a compromise, but here are the areas where you're not allowed to go beyond?
I think that, I think that you might be throwing some responsibilities onto mediator that we might not want to give the, you know, request to the mediator. I think the mediator, in agricultural terms, will go and till the soil and, and put and, and gather up the seeds and say, okay, select board, I've, I've rearranged these seeds so they're, they're closer to you. They make more sense. They're more organized. Go back to your leadership situation. I, I certainly don't think anybody's gonna be happy, and this board included, if we say to the mediator, tell us how much square feet we should have in a library. That's, woo-hoo, you know, that's not gonna work.
No.
But to, as an exercise, to have people be more kindly and gently part of the process again, which some people feel excluded, some people feel, you know, varying, a whole range of, of emotions, to bring that in and make it a, you know, more gentle process, I think that's the job of the mediator. So the mediator doesn't really need to know the specifics per se. They just need to say, hey, you know, we're not that far apart, or we are this far apart, but this is how we can get closer, a little bit closer, a lot closer. You know, those are the things that the mediator can do.
In fact, both mediators said that it would, it's better for the mediator to not have a lot of specifics going in, that they, you know, they need to, they need to be able to be a neutral hearing point. And so having a lot of specifics about what we went through and all of the anguish is not helpful to them.
But the results of the survey would be specifics.
They, yes, but that would be.
They need those.
That would be facts on the ground at that point.
Yeah, and as I say, I mean, hopefully the survey identifies where the most difficult divisions are, which then gives the mediator their task, so to speak. Or a large majority of their task anyway.
Yeah, and the mediator's skill is in translation, you know. The mediator may look on paper and say, you have twenty-five percent of the town feels X. But the, the mediator's skill is in saying, you know, is, is not necessarily addressing exactly the cost, but is saying, what can we do to, for you to understand the value of a library for, you know, if, if there's twenty percent of the people just don't want a new library. The mediator's value is saying, as, as people, you know, what can we do to you, you know, what can we tell you, what can we show you to that in your mind, the library increases in value and, and that sort of thing. So it's, you know, again, Dr. Rick's comment of, of, they don't want the particulars because they're not deciding winners and losers.
They're not negotiators.
They're not negotiators. They're, they facilitate relationships. I think that's the very best way to put it. Stretch in the back.
Okay. I was wondering if you wanted to respond to what's been talked about here?
He was out of the room.
Just wanted to get a drink of water.
Agua.
Uh, no, you're doing great, great work here, fellas.
So we're good with saying we can hold off on locating a mediator until at least at some point during the survey process, we want to then start doing a search?
Yeah, I, I think you're safe to hold on, to keep that moving forward, but you don't have to make a decision at the same time you have to make a decision on the, what was the language you used, which sounds like a lot better than a survey?
A polling scientist?
Polling scientist.
That's from this weekend's launch.
I guess maybe I did miss that part. I, I'm of the mindset that I just don't see the harm in at least putting out a request to start looking at some organizations, just not, not necessarily to get them on payroll and get them started on things, but to know that we have someone there that we can call and that the next time we get into, how do we plan this out? We don't have to go, well, we need a month to get a mediator.
The other, the other advantage is that if we may find a firm that has both polling and mediation capabilities inside, underneath one roof, and if we release the RFPs, you know, adjacent to each other, we may find a symbiotic team that, that works well.
Yeah, and I'm not advocating that the mediator should get started right away and start spending money, but at least trying to.
We should be moving towards that, in that direction.
What message does that say if we use the same firm both for the survey and the mediation? Are we sending, are we possibly sending a message that we're not gonna be comfortable with? Or, you know, that some people will take offense at? Again, devil's advocate.
This is where I bite my tongue. In that we are looking to deal with professionals.
Yes.
Catcalling about profession, I mean, not us, not the board, but other people saying, oh, well, it's obviously gonna be totally bogus because it's the same firm. Holds no water to me. If, if we're dealing with professionals and if it happens to be that the best team comes from the same organization, then, then to me, it, it, you know, that, that criticism from the citizenry is a less than valid criticism because we're dealing with professionals and, and to an extent, you know, I think we threw Emily under the bus because as a professional, she can divorce her, we'll assume that, you know, a, 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 a true professional can divorce their, their individual feelings from the work that they do professionally. They have to do it all the time. So, so I, I don't think, I, I don't, you know, rise gently to your bait. I don't think that that should be an issue and I don't think it's a valid criticism.
You know, because I'm going back to the fact that, you know, a lot of this really comes down to emotion. And, you know, you know, we need to be able to deal with that and, and make it clear that we're not, we're not operating on emotion, but we're dealing with professionals to give us scientific results.
Right.
Or fact-based results.
On the survey end and on.
Survey end and then use those to assist in the mediation.
Again, I, you know, we're, as Jeff says, we're dealing with professionals and it may be that the survey professionals tell us, well, you're much better off using a different firm for mediation. I don't know. I, I don't know enough about it to know one way or the other.
I don't, I mean, I jab myself a note. I don't know if there is firms that have both.
Well, there are. I've, I've, on a national basis, I've, I've interviewed CEOs of, of firms that do exactly that.
Do both?
Yeah.
But I wouldn't, I wouldn't be averse to it, you know, right off the bat. I'd want to look at this individual situation, obviously. And, and as far as Emily is concerned, I have no question that she could divorce her work from her emotion. The issue is not that. The issue was the appearance.
No, I, I understand that and I understand that, you know.
And, and to a certain extent, I guess that's what Bill's point is, is is there anything in the appearance of the same firm doing it? And I'm, I'm not sure there is, especially if the firm is not local. But it's, it's a valid question.
Owen?
Owen, you wanna?
I was just gonna say, if we pick two different firms or if we pick one firm, you're gonna, you're gonna make someone somewhere in town upset. And I guess I've gotten over that fact. I mean, frequently we're put in positions where we have to make a decision where one group or some body of individuals will be upset about the decision we make. Regardless. Just maybe different people depending on what decision we make. So.
I think the only problem with an, with an RFP for a mediator right now is we don't know what the scope of services will be because I think that's gonna be dictated to a certain extent by what we hear back from the survey. Now, maybe we can put out an open-ended RFP just telling, saying, tell us what your skills are and tell us what your hourly rate is or something like that and, or, I don't know. But I think that the, the mediation process is gonna be defined to a great extent by what we hear from the survey and, and any respondent. any respondent to that is not gonna know that until we get that back.
You know, instead of troubled teens, it's the troubled town needs mediator.
I think, you know, I, I think, I think we can, I think the way to, I think the way to go is to move the process that we've already started with the RFP for the, um, polling scientist. Get that started, get, get that moving along, get that decision-making moving along, and then behind that, come up with the, the, um, how we're gonna approach, uh, the mediation piece.
And perhaps, you know, that's a question to ask our local professionals, whether it's Paul or, or Eric, um, what's the right time to put out an RFP for a mediator? How detailed does the RFP have to be, given that the survey is gonna, the survey responses are gonna dictate to some extent how much of their services and what the scope is required?
I just heard just today, just a little bit ago, uh, there's another local mediator, um, that does legal mediation, um, that, you know, I think we're, there's a, there's a lot of complexity to this, and I think it's more complex than any of us can, um, can deal with at the moment. Uh, but there are people out there that we, that can advise us on how to move forward. And I, I think we should take advantage of those people.
Yeah, I mean, maybe that's the way to, to handle this at this point. Instead of rushing to, to do an RFP, let's ask a few more questions of, of our local resources, and so that we do the RFP properly.
So one of the things we're gonna need to determine is how we want the mediation to move forward. Yeah, do we have one large group, or do we have multiple small groups, or, you know, and what do we charge each of those groups to do, and things like that?
City of mother.
I, I say that's what the professionals tell us, I think, you know, we, we're not, at least I'm not equipped to make that decision right now. I don't know what will work. If I knew what would work, I would have suggested it a year ago.
Yes.
So, how are we doing here?
We're doing eight fifteen.
Yeah, I think you, you have all the information you have, you need to get to the next one. The next item on the agenda.
Somebody wants to get home early tonight.
Subtle suggestion there.
Okay, where do we want to go from here? We're sending out an RFP, what's our next step in regards to this process before we get the result? Do we have anything we want to do between now and when we get the results of that RFP back, and we, you know, read through them, and maybe, you know, call a couple in, or to interview, or whatever? Do we have anything else?
Rick is gonna float the RFP by us individually.
Yeah, but that's individually.
But as a board, I, I think at that point, then we, we get the responses back and we schedule a workshop to go through them.
Did we want to say that you could float it by John Veman and Emily as well?
I was already planning that.
Yeah. This is.
I'm not gonna develop that on my own.
We're putting him in charge of this. Unless we wanna start questioning what he's doing, I think that's where we should leave it. Okay? We're good with that? Okay. So, until we get the results in, what timeframe are we looking to for having those results back?
The RFP.
The R, the results of the RFP, the responses. How long do we actually have to have that out, have the RFP out?
We can make our own deadline.
Yeah.
Well, there's, there's reasonable limits there, you know, we don't wanna make a deadline of two, of two days or 10 weeks.
Let me, I, I, you know, I don't think, let me talk to, to John and Emily and see what they think is a reasonable response time. I don't know what that is.
Okay.
I, I'd like to see two to three weeks.
To have the responses.
And it seems to me that we could, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, certainly, it seems to me that by the end of this week, you could have developed it, run it by people, including us, and we can get back to you, so that the RFP could be sent out.
Right.
Before the end of this week.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay.
And then, you know, two weeks after that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so we're looking sometime like the middle of May to have the responses, so we can get back together again.
Yeah. Which we all just love to do.
I know. Well, the, the, my worrisome problem here is, we're, we're meeting tonight, and then our next scheduled meeting is May eighth.
Which I will miss.
And there's all next week. Oh, wait, no, that's right, May first, we have the, the capital camp, uh, capital improvement.
You're gonna meet all next week without getting together?
We're gonna go without all, yeah. No, we're not. Okay. I feel so much better now.
Trembling heart.
Okay. And then, of course, we have also on May 11th, the Capital Improvement Committee Second Workshop, or Capital Improvement Plan Second Workshop. Um, come on, get month. Now get May. So we're looking sometime the week of May 15th to have them back and do our initial review. Um, now, we will be holding our regular, a second regular meeting, May 22nd. I'm, I'm putting these things out there so we can start thinking about it. You're not here for the eighth.
Right.
Is there anybody missing the following week?
The 15th to the 20th?
You know, and I'm talking, you know, we already have our wastewater workshop and an executive session scheduled for the 15th.
Four P.M.
Yep. And then roll right into the executive, uh, session.
Well, I hope I'm awake, because that means I'll be making money, but I'm not, so.
Okay, well, all right. So we will look at probably sometime that week. I will get back to you. Um, of course, well, if we, if we say we want the responses back by, say, the 12th?
Let me work, you're trying to define this.
Yeah.
Yourself here, without me being able to talk to the local, see if we, if it's possible.
All right, we can do that.
I think it's gonna have to main, be a little bit flexible here.
So Marcy's been sending me stuff about, um, how they did the wastewater survey, and I think it's just for thought-provoking stuff. Uh, I can send it to anyone else. It's rather large, uh, but she says that the first page is the, where they advertised, and it just may be helpful to look at. If anyone wants to.
Okay. So.
Have you sent, forwarded that to us?
Uh, if there's a desire to, I can send it to everyone.
Sure.
Information is good.
So, do we wanna try to keep Rick away from home any longer?
Uh, move to adjourn.
Excluding just Rick.
Yeah.
All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you all.